Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of Tuesday, March 14, 2023. This meeting is being held obviously remotely instead of in person. It is a fully remote meeting due to today's snowstorm. But we didn't want to hold up any of the progress being made during a very busy month of March and a busy budget season. Tonight's meeting is going to be predominantly dedicated to the superintendent, the business administrator and their team members presenting the proposal for the FY24 school department budget. We will of course be having the opening as a typical. And if we could call the meeting to order, I shall and ask all to join in these pledges allegiance. If you have a flag nearby or certainly one in your heart, please join us. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Next, to read the mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high quality instruction and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. Item number four on the agenda is a public comment time. Any member of the community who obviously needs to be with us via Zoom this evening would like to address the school committee on any topic, whether it's on tonight's agenda or not, is welcome to do so at this time. Ryan or our friends at WCAT, are there any members of the public who seem to be indicating that they would like to speak?
I do not believe so, Mr. Markham.
Okay, seeing none, we will move on to our item number five, which is a report, an update from the student advisory council. How are you? How are you ladies tonight?
I'm good. How are you?
Great. So, so welcome and certainly thank you very much for doing this on a snowy night.
Of course.
If you could introduce yourselves and say your class name so everyone here on Zoom can get a full, full understanding and please tell us what's happening at Wakefield Memorial High School.
I'm Isabella Bercham. I'm a senior at Wakefield High School. And for the updates today for academics, spring conferences are scheduled for Thursday from six to eight. Ms. McLeod sent out information to register and her update over the weekend and some. Sorry, my video is not working. Okay, there we go. So for other school news, the seniors hosted the annual senior show this past weekend at the Galvin. Sorry, my computer is having some issues, but I'll try to be quick. So the senior show happened over the weekend. Everyone looked like they were having a great time. It was really fun. And there was a lot of, a lot of good memories made, so that was exciting. And there's also an early release day for the high school tomorrow. And now turn it over to Molly. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Molly Bernado. I'm also a senior at Wakefield High. We have some more news from the performing arts and the music department from this past week. So the WMH drama program has moved on to the Mass Theater Guild State semifinals with the show Lost Girl and they're competing this Saturday at Andover High School. The winter percussion and winter color guard are both undefeated teams as of right now. And they both won last weekend in Salem, New Hampshire. And our jazz ensemble got a silver medal at the Massachusetts Association of Jazz District Festival last Tuesday. So all very exciting. And besides that, we have spring sport tryouts starting next week. And that is all the updates we have for you.
Great. Well, thank you very much ladies. Any, any questions from the committee or comments? Seeing them, well, thank you very, very much and for the updates and for your work and congratulations on great senior show last, our last weekend. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Bye.
Bye. Item six, the consent agenda. We have a motion. Amy.
Both that the school committee approved the minutes of the February 28, 2023 school committee meeting and accept the minutes of the January 31, 2023 school committee policy and communications subcommittee meeting, the minutes of the March 2nd, 2023 school committee finance and facilities subcommittee meeting, and the minutes of the March 6, 2023 school committee student services subcommittee meeting as presented.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Made a second and any comments or edits? Seeing none, all in favor? Please actually raise your hands for this. Okay. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number seven, our budget reports, business items. Christine, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. So tonight we have the financial reports in front of you that go from July 1st up until February 28th, 2023. We have just an available balance of just over $3 million. Available percentage is just over 6% to get us to the end of the fiscal year. At this time, we're kind of working with schools about end of year purchases to spend down some of their supply money and to kind of get ready for the end of this fiscal year.
Hey Christine, I think you said April rather than February.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. February 28th. I'm thinking ahead. I'm thinking to end of fiscal year. But we're, yeah, we're working to spend down those lines. The rest of the salaries are encumbered for the, for the rest of the year. And then we have our grant reports that are due. We have to do quarterly, quarterly reports to DSE to spend down our entitlement grants. So we're kind of working on that. Some of our Title I and Title II A just got a slight increase. So we'll see an amendment going in this month for that, but not much, just about about a thousand dollars increase for the rest of this fiscal year. But any, any more money in that respect is, is going to be a help, that's for sure. And then the revolving accounts, again, a lot of this is timing about when those revenues are coming in. So when we can hit the expenditures for school lunch and circuit breaker for those to finish out this quarter. So that's the financial reports until the end of February. Does anyone have any questions?
No money in the Silicon Valley Bank, Christine, where I'll say we're safe.
Do not believe so. And then we have the payrolls to be approved for February.
We have a motion.
Both that the school committee approved payroll warrants number 32 and number 34 as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Passes unanimously. And there are no gifts this evening?
No, there is. There's a gift for the, from the friends of the Wakefield High School basketball group. Two stipends for two assistant boys' basketball coaches for the winter season. A gift of $4,300.
Both that the school committee accept with gratitude the donation of $4,300 from friends of Wakefield High School basketball stipends for two assistant boys' basketball coaches for the 2022, 2023 winter session.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Posped? Passed unanimously. Thank you. Okay. We all said, Christine, great. Okay, item number eight, chairs, comments and actions. I guess the, the, the most important thing that could be said this evening at this, at this point is really a strong, a thank you to the community, to the voters and taxpayers of Wakefield for, for really a strong showing at Saturday's special election. In that we are, we are now well on our way to a new Wakefield Memorial High School. It's a very exciting time for, yes, yes, exactly. It's a very exciting time for the Wakefield Public Schools and I think for the community at large. Certainly lots of people to, to, to reach out and thank for this, but you know, the administration and staff who have been at this, as we talked about at our last meeting, starting about 10 years ago. We really began the effort with the first couple of SOIs being written and, and here we are in about a couple of years from now, hopefully being able to, to open the new Wakefield Memorial High School. So the community rallied, the town rallied, all of the supports that we were able to receive from, from, from the community, from residents and taxpayers to be, really be able to see that the students and families of Wakefield, it's time for a new high school, but also the tremendous benefit to the community and to the, and to the homeowners. So really just a huge thank you. I'm sure, I'm sure I speak for the entire committee in thanking the community for their out, for their strong showing on Saturday and all of those who helped bring us to this point. So we will leave it, we will leave it at that for now and I'm sure we'll be continuing to talk about, to talk about this for, for some time to come, but. Okay, item number nine, superintendent's reports and recommendations. Turn it over to, to Dr. Lyons for, for the next portion of the meeting, probably for the rest of the meeting, actually. Dr. Lyons.
Thank you very much, Tom. Much appreciated. And again, from all the administrators and teachers on the school side, thank you everyone and thank you, thank you, thank you to the community for all of the support this past Saturday. It was really an amazing showing and it's much appreciated from, from us as well. And so we'd like to start off just by giving an update on an amazing program called Project 351. And here from the middle school is assistant principal Andrew Tetrault, along with Matthias, to talk a little bit about that work. Andrew?
Thanks, Dr. Lyons. Good evening, the entire school committee. Thanks for having us. I know we've got one of the slides up. I think we might need to go to the beginning. That's the last slide. But I'll do a little introduction and let everyone know kind of what Project 351 is all about. Maybe some new committee members that aren't familiar with the organization. Quick overview, Project 351 is a nonprofit organization. Its founder is Carolyn Casey, who is just an unbelievable person. And basically she had a vision for the state of Massachusetts and eighth graders across the state to like just come together to come and lead and give back to the community and be inspired to kind of bring that back to their own home communities. And you know, do some sort of give back at their own school level. And so it is, it's been around for a number of years and I've had the privilege of being involved for the last couple since I've been at the Galvin as an assistant principal. And so it is a, a great, it's a great organization. It is, I've had the, the, like I said, the privilege and honor to see eighth graders from across the state just do some pretty amazing things and just come together and, you know, really, really be inspired. And so it's kind of fun to see. So I will, we can flip through a couple of the, the first couple of slides and just to give the introduction, like I said, the, it's a nonprofit and, and it brings eighth graders across the entire Commonwealth to come together. And we, basically what ends up happening is that one eighth grader from every community, so it's 351 communities in Massachusetts, and so one eighth grader come together to Boston during Martin Luther King Weekend. And they have an entire day of just being inspired and seeing some, some great statewide leaders and hearing their stories. And then they go out to the, to the Boston community and they, they kind of give back and they come back for a big thing. And so this year, our person from the Galvin Middle School that we nominated, like just an unbelievable student, Matthias George, and he's here with us tonight. And, and some of the things that his teachers and staff and, and, you know, students and peers say about him were these words that they used to describe him, just super genuine, kind. I've, you know, Matthias has been in our school for four years and I don't think I've ever seen a day where he didn't have a smile on his face. He's just an unbelievable kiddo. And so he's also been involved in a couple of things at our school. I know he's, he's a big member of our Science Olympiad team. I know he and a couple of his friends have been inspired to do like this Team C's fundraiser just at the Galvin, even before Project 351 was even mentioned to him. So I'm going to turn it over to Matthias. Matthias had a chance to kind of go through the Saturday and he's just going to tell you a little bit about the day and kind of what it meant. And then we'll tell you kind of what's happening in the future. So Matthias, you're up, pal.
Hello, everyone. As Mr. T said, I'd like to talk about my experiences with Project 351 and what we did for our first launch day. And I'd also like to tell you about our plans for what we're going to do for the Galvin. Could you flip the slide, please? Okay, first, we started out in Faneuil Hall. We took our buses to Faneuil Hall. So every ambassador would have a bus that they would take to Faneuil Hall. And we were able to, they bought us a bunch of treats and they were so nice to us. And they were super welcoming, like people had issues getting there. So they waited and everything. They were so nice to us. And as we got to Faneuil Hall, we got to meet everyone. We got to also get a front row seat to the interview of the governor, which I have a picture up on the slide there. And that was really cool because we got to see like behind the scenes a little bit and also a little more information on Project 351. Could you flip the slide? And here we were put with our service groups and we were able to talk and get to know each other before we went on our projects. And this picture is a customary picture that Project 351 likes to do. And this is actually the first picture in years because COVID has ruined the in-person event. So this is the first picture of all of us together in a while. So I think that's pretty cool. Could you flip the slide? And here we have the unite, the act, the lead of everyone. And it's so amazing how everyone can just get together and work together to create something amazing. Could you flip the slide? And here we're off to our service projects. Service projects are basically places where we go, thanks to Project 351, and we help everyone in many ways. So we went to the International Brotherhood of Electrical Walkers Service Village. Other teams got to go to other places like Crayons and stuff like that. But here we were, we were split up within our service groups doing different tasks. So in the top right corner, in that picture, you can see our service group creating a blanket that we would donate to people who need blankets. And in the bottom corner, you can see two of my service group members who created these two paintings to put up in like foster homes and stuff like that. So that's what we got to do that day. We also made Veterans Day cards. But unfortunately I wasn't able to get a picture of that because that went by way too fast. But it was still really fun to be there and everything. Could you flip the slide? And this is our service group that we, that I worked together with. And this is, these are the people that I was spending the entire day with, I was working with and making a difference. Could you flip the slide? And after the service project, we went to Faneuil Hall where we had a dance party. And we got to see how much of a difference we made. In this picture, you can see 6,152 lives impacted in this one day. And I think that's just incredible because in one day we managed to impact all these people. And if we just continued for like two more days, we'd have like from 6,000 and then like 30,000. And then we continue and continue with all these service projects, creating blankets, creating cards and just impacting people's lives. Can you flip the slide? All right. So next I'm going to talk about what's next for the Galvin Middle School. What we're planning to do with Project 351. Could you flip the line? So we have been told we could do a spring service project where we connect clothes and stuff that we could donate to Crayons and Crayons as an organization. It gives clothes and shoes and hats to people in need of such things. So our plan is to create a clothing drive. We will collect new to gently use hats, shirts, jackets, socks and pants for the youth and children. And we're gonna, we plan to kick it off at the parent university on the 25th. And we're going to spend donation weeks of the 27th to the third, getting people to donate. And then Project 351 has already planned spring reunion at Gillette Stadium where we will, everyone will come together and we'll do another service project. And yeah, thank you for having me.
Matthias, well done. So a couple, a couple of things really, like Matthias is a year long, like so he's our ambassador from Wakefield. He's got a year long kind of journey to do. And so I've just kind of given back and, and we've had some amazing kids come through the Galvin and, and participate in this event. And it is kind of like, you know, you can hear it in Matthias's voice. It's an unbelievable day to see a bunch of eighth graders, right, just thinking about other people. And they come from across the state. I mean, from North Adams to Nantucket, it's like an all day event. And Matthias has been in, you know, he's even still in contact. It's kind of nice about the 21st century, right? Like he's still in contact with his, his group. Even now they've got a group chat going and they're checking in on each other, which is kind of a, a fun, unique thing to be inspired by other kids across the state and, and to get that motivation. So we're going to do a cool little fundraiser or I guess a clothing drive, like I said, over those weeks. And I'm working with Matthias on that. And we have a, we have kind of all of our marching orders through Project 351. But you know, we're super excited about it. I'm super proud of Matthias and all he's doing. And just thank you guys for letting us take a few minutes to talk about it.
Thank you so much, Andrew. Matthias, thank you so much. We're very, very proud of you. It's an honor to be selected. And Mr. Tetrault said that you kind of, you crushed it. He said, you did such an amazing job. And we want to let you know that we're grateful for what you're doing right now. And if we can help, please let us know.
All right. Thank you. And thank you for having me here.
Ready to go, Matthias. Good job.
It's great to have you here. So we're moving on to budget. You're welcome to stay, but you, you might want to. And so it looks like Stephen had, has a question for you.
I gotta get used to Zoom again.
Me too.
Matthias, that looked amazing, that the idea that you met with like 350 of your peers from around the state. That's, and Mr. Tetrault already answered one of my questions, which was, are you maintaining contact with your, your friends? And are they, are they also from sort of around the state? Do they go as far west or as far, or are they more central? The ones that were in your service group that sort of you're maintaining contact with?
Well, Project 351's plan originally with bus groups, bus groups collected all the people around us. So their plan was also to like put people in the service group that work on the bus. So not because they don't want you to be with your service group, but because they want you to meet new people before you make your service group and stuff like that. So I don't know exactly where everyone lives, but a few of them are like really far away. But it's like not too far away, but like really far away, I guess.
A little bit of both.
I don't know how to explain it really well.
Yeah. Well, that's nice. Different perspectives being from different parts of the state. That's, that's wonderful. And just maybe one more question, which was, can you talk a little bit about what you're envisioning for the kickoff event at Parent University?
Well, Parent University is like where our parents come in to our classrooms and they learn. So what we're going to do is we're going to do something like we did here. We're going to explain to them what's going on because the parents are the people who usually need to know that this is going on because they can help with all the collecting. So we're going to have a presentation probably similar to this. And we're going to explain to them what Project 351 is and how they can help with the fundraiser.
Wonderful. That's great. I'm looking forward to it. I'll, I'll just close on, I'm a member of 103, the local union that you were at. And I'm glad you got to use the hall. It's a good space and it's good to know that, that it goes to, to, you know, things like 351. That's great. Thank you for representing Wakefield.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Other questions before we transition? Okay, before we move on to our budget presentation, I'd just like to give just a, some quick updates and kind of give a shout out to our student athletes. We had postseason play and basketball, boys and girls basketball, along with hockey. Our girls and boy, our girls' basketball team and our hockey team, boys hockey team, both moved to the Elite Eight in Division Two, which is amazing to make it to the, to the best eight in the state. It was, so it was just really great stuff. This past week, Wednesday, Thursday, we had two really amazing games that within the field house was pretty packed for, for all the events and as well as the, the rink down, down on the South Shore. So, so much appreciated for all that attended and supported students. And our, our congratulations to the athletes where, where now it's, we know it's kind of bittersweet to kind of end your season, but we, we're wanting to let you know that we're really proud of you and, and all that you've done. So your, your achievements are going really well recognized and well noticed. I also want to give a very quick shout out to our Science Olympiad teams. We have two teams. We have a high school team now that competed at Wentworth Institute and our middle school team competed again at Assumption College. And so both teams, both student groups had really great experiences. And we're going to have more information in our next meeting on that. But we want to just let everybody know that we say congratulations to the students and, and special thanks to the, to the teachers and mentors that, that kind of make, made that happen. So thank you to all. So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just pivot.
Dr. Lyons, can I just jump in and just let Matthias and Mr. Tetrault know that they can move on if they, if you want to go? I think we're good for your, for your part. Thank you so much for joining.
Thanks, everyone. We'll see you.
All right. Thank you.
Matthias, thank you.
Thanks very much.
That would be something in regard to service to have to sit through a budget presentation. And so God bless him. Thank you for helping me with that, Kara. I appreciate it. And so if we can get the slide deck up. And so, God bless him. Thank you for helping me with that, Kara. I appreciate it. And so, um if we can um get the slide deck up. So we have about twenty slides tonight. About eight of the slides are data slides. That are representative of the three surveys that we did. To try to inform our work and our prioritization around the budget and our proposed budget for this evening. And so, next slide, please. Uh the goal of this evening is to publicly share budget priorities that align with the district and instructional strategy. This also aligns with our district goals. Um and administrative goals in our school improvement plans. So you'll be hearing more about that in the spring. Both from our principals and from Kara and I. Um we want to explain the, the proposed budget priorities. Where do they come from? Um we want to share kind of the information from the budget survey. We've, we've really tried to condense. And summarize the information differently than we have in years past. In years past, we've had. You know, fifteen, twenty data slides. This year, we've really tried to pare it down. We have eight slides. Um and so we've really tried to summarize. So if there are questions. In regard to any part of this process, we will certainly take any and all of those at the end of the presentation. So we'll then share kind of our survey results. And then something different than, that we haven't done in years past. Is we want to kind of forecast out for FY twenty-five and twenty-six. We want to be prepared. Um for what's coming down in the, in the coming years. And so this is something that we've worked with our. Our, our finance and facilities subcommittee on, and we've also worked with our FinCom liaisons on this as well. So next slide, please. So for budget priorities for FY twenty-four. Based on the challenges that we, students have faced post-COVID. You know, I've shared earlier in our goal presentation, I also shared in our tri-board presentation back in October. You know, we, we've seen students return to school this year. Um and some students have hit the ground running and they've been amazing. Right? And where others have really, it's taken them longer um to, to kind of. Fall into kind of a pattern or to kind of really get back in school shape. And so with, with still others. That have had difficulty with some behavioral health and mental health needs. Um and so we're, we're really, the range of needs for our students has widened. Due to, due to COVID, right? And so, and also the gaps in um students being with one another. And participating in their schedules as they had pre-COVID has really created some gaps. So. We want to continue to really talk about how we are responding to that and what we are providing for intervention services. So you heard the elementary principals talk when they talked about their school improvement plans around really needing to care for students. And if we can care for students in regard to meeting their social, emotional needs, they feel like a lot of things will fall into place. And a key part of that is really intervention, right? How are we intervening? And so you'll hear more about that as we go through our presentation. One of the things we also want to talk about is points of acceleration. Something that has come up and really shown itself, not only in the data, but in feedback that we've gotten from students. Is parents have asked, you know, um if my child is a, um is ready to take on higher level work. How can we do that? Especially in the area of math and science. Um that's a point of, of focus for us. And, and we're looking at kind of academic achievement. We're, we're tracking data. You heard me say earlier in the year. That we really want to focus on student growth this year. So whatever the deficits were, whatever the gaps were. We really wanted to focus this year on students coming in and understanding what the baseline was and how they're, they're improving, right? And so that's something that continues to be a focus. So academic achievement, social and emotional success for students. Um but we're also looking at other funding sources. So we just partnered with our, our local board of health. And uh the Melrose Public School System and the Stonem Public School System. To enter into a Stop the Violence Grant, which resulted in a, the grant funding. For an Adjustment Council for three years at the high school. We're also investigating some other grants, which I can talk about later in the spring. Um so with this, there's also a priority to better meet the needs of our English language learners. Um we just have more students whose first language is not English. So the EL uh acronym. Is it's formerly the ESL, English as a Second Language, or English Language Learners, um which has been reduced to EL. Um so we have a greater number of students and Kara's gonna talk about that later. Um special education, Rosie Galvin has been. Uh I would, I, I would say a really an amazing addition to the district. Um her ability to build programming. To dedicate resources and to meet the needs of students. Um we've been much improved in this space and we can talk about that as we go through. Next slide, please. So, we will also talk, um as we have in our subcommittee meetings. About uh the need for us to, you know, recruit, retain and develop outstanding teachers, administrators, parent educators. Um that are really um the, really the most competitive in the ranks. And, and we need to kind of be, be able to support them with a new contract. That's going to be a, a fundamental theme. Not, and not only this budget, but in the coming years as well. So we need to continue with preventative maintenance on the buildings that we've started. Uh one of the things that COVID has created is really a greater partnership between the schools and the town in regard to maintaining. Um and really improving our buildings. And so. Um fundamental to that on our side is, has been the hiring of, of Tim O'Brien. Um and we've discussed this in the facilities subcommittee as well. So more to follow there. And, and then we, we just want to stay focused on um the size of this budget. But the size of this budget is really, um it, it employs, we, the Wakefield Public Schools. Employ six hundred and two employees in seven bargaining units. So when we talk about, you know, when the town talks on scale about. Police or fire or other departments, eh, you know, all departments have different needs. But on the school side, you know, we, we employ six hundred employees that are serving thirty, close to thirty-four hundred students. And so we, we don't want to lose sight of that. That's an important piece. Next slide, please.
Sure, I can jump in here. And so all, all of those points that Doug was just talking about. Everyone wants to know, well, really, what does that cost, right? All of those things that we're trying to achieve um costs money. And we really tried to, to represent the three large buckets. Of course, number one is personnel. This, those six hundred and two employees um come with a cost. And what that means from twenty-three to twenty-four is an increase from thirty-nine million dollars to over about forty-two million dollars. And what that bucket is, it's what the known cost is. It's taking all the known salaries of current employees. Um the two additional positions, which we'll talk about in a few minutes. But also um projections for our collective bargaining agreements. The six that have been settled and the one that's still in negotiation. So we have to plan accordingly. To make sure that we meet the needs of all of our employees. The other two buckets are contractual services. So those are our vendors. Our transportation contracts are um, add addition to tuition vendors. Anything that provides a service to the district. And the last bucket, which is the smallest bucket, is materials and supplies. What, what it costs to actually um to, to buy the supplies, the paper, the, the pencils. The, the things of that nature to actually make the schools run. So from twenty-three to twenty-four, we're looking at an increase of just over two-point-four million dollars. Which, which equals about a five-point-two-two percent increase from twenty-three to twenty-four. Now, keep in mind, from twenty-three to twenty-four, that also include, includes an ARPA funding source. If you remember last year, we had three hundred thousand dollars from ARPA funds from the town. And this year, um from the generosity of the town, um we're anticipating two hundred thousand dollars from ARPA funding. To continue to support um salaries for the district. Next slide.
So one of the things that we always talk about is budgeting for the knowns and not the unknowns, right? We, we want to be consistent with really prioritizing, you know, what we know to be in front of us, right? And so human resources, I mentioned this a moment ago, um labor has, the cost of labor has increased. We have settled. New contracts for six of our seven bargaining units. We are currently in negotiations with our teachers, which is our largest bargaining unit. There are three hundred and sixty members. Of Unit A, which we call the, the teacher's unit. So we're negotiating a new three-year contract there. And you know, you don't have to go far to open the newspaper or watch the news. And you can see, you know, um. There are teachers that are striking in other districts to, to get uh better contracts, right? And. And, and this is the, this is the time and this is the environment that we're in. It's just kind of the cost of doing business. We need to be attentive to that and, and I think we, we are trying to plan budgets that really prioritize our teachers. But also, we're also trying to plan budgets that are sustainable year over year. So that's why we say that the first bullet here is about human resources and personnel, right? Um the next bullet, we want to create schedules to increase opportunities for intervention and acceleration, consistent with the points I made earlier. We need to prioritize, we need to prioritize time for professional development and teacher collaboration, right? And so what we are learning very clearly is that, you know. Curriculum alone, we, we purchase new curriculums on a curriculum cycle. That's a fundamental part of improving a district. But what the next part of that is the instruction that happens in the classroom. And really professional development is a time for, for teachers to really hone their craft and instruction and what's happening in the classroom. Um and, and we need to maintain and possibly increase technology supports. Um, you know, in the area of, you know, now munis. And we've increased with power schools. We're need, we're gonna need to continue to kind of improve our efficiency and our effectiveness with this. So this system, we've brought a new student management system online, but it has a number of features. That um we might be able to kind of develop and, and kind of build out. That might save us money in other areas. So that's what we're looking at right now. We're also looking at munis, which is our financial system. Uh the current system that we have is, is really outdated and, and we're gonna collaborate with the town on that. So more to follow. Things that are unknowns are, you know, the challenges in regard to settling the contract. We don't have that. Kind of, we don't know what that's going to cost at this point in time. Other unknowns is in-district programs and the needs of, uh we have with in-district programming that we may need to build. In place of sending students out, that has an associated cost. And, and I think Rosie Galvin has saved a lot of money and our out-of-district. Numbers, a number of students that are going out of district has decreased. And I think that that is primarily due to. Uh the work that Rosie Galvin has led, along with the teachers that we've been able to hire to keep students in district. So. But we, we want to pay attention to that, but right now there's no number associated with that. Um additional increases in cost for goods and services. So, you know, as prices go up around the globe. And certainly locally, that affects how we do business. And a big question for us is. You know, will there be continued funding for student meals in FY twenty-four? That's a really important piece. So, next slide, please. So the next two slides, instead of breaking them out with bar graphs and, and having, you know, ten slides. I've just taken, um, I've just made an attempt to, to summarize. Um what is, you know, seven hundred, almost eight hundred people that have prioritized, have given their top two priorities. In the area of um teaching, quality teaching, curriculum, individualized student learning. And as well as district personnel. And the structure is the same structure that we use in goal setting. Um and also in our instructional strategy. So in regard to teach, parents and guardians. They have kind of listed their top two um priorities based on the survey results. From five hundred and sixty-seven respondents. The top two priorities, this is teachers in the classroom. This is direct service. Um they're, they're saying that intervention. Um they, they, we need greater intervention for children. Um and they, they have highlighted counselors and school psychologists. In regard to curriculum, they want to see, you know, greater support in the, in the STEM fields, pre-K through twelve. And Kara can talk a little bit about that as she goes through her piece in a moment. Um we were talking about reading and writing curriculums and, and you've heard bits and pieces from Kara about how we're already into that work. Um and we're working on a few grants to continue to support that work as we move into the next school year. So more to follow there. Um student services, excuse me, individualized student learning. Um so direct service to kids. So again, intervention has been prioritized. And so we, what has also been prioritized is just support in regard to executive function and organization skills. And so Kara is gonna summarize more of this when we talk about the Student Services Survey in a moment. But in regard to executive function, I, I know two of the things that really jumped out for me. One is the difficulty a lot of our students are having at initiating tasks. Um and persevering through the work, like working on a sing, singular task over a long period of time. Right? And, and so Kara could talk more about that. And in terms of district personnel, the two priorities that were highlighted were instructional coaches. Um support in math and literacy, especially as we're bringing on new curriculum. And a director of student services, which we feel like Rosie and her team has a, has kind of a, a line on this. So next slide, please. So what we look at when we look, when we summarize survey results. And when we compare what teachers might report compared to what parents report. When they report the same priorities, it lets us know that we're in the right place, right? It's like a check and balance. And so. You'll see that the top two priorities in, on the same grid um from faculty and staff. In regard to teaching, um they're, they're calling for more support with councils and psychologists and more support with special education. Social, emotional, mental health curriculum, uh reading and writing resources. Writing is something that we really need to. Attend to differently than we have in years past. You know, students interact with more text and more different ways. Especially with their phones and how they interact with one another. But in terms of helping them and really guiding them to be better writers. It's a real area of growth for us as a district. And that's K, pre-K or pre-K through twelve. And so in terms of individualized student support, counseling services and executive function again. Um and in terms of personnel, social worker, you, you heard me say earlier in my comments that we're bringing a new. Counselor on at the high school that's grant-funded, which we feel like directly impacts this priority. Um and again, the director of student services um is an area that I think Rosie is, is gonna have to, we're gonna be working in, with her department on that. Next slide, please. Thank you so much.
I can jump in here. Um so I, there, there's six slides of, of survey data, so I won't go um, you know, into a lot of detail slide by slide. Uh but first of all, I wanted to, to thank the Student Services Subcommittee led by Amy Lehman, uh Island Collarin and Kevin Fontanella. Who've been working with me and Rosie Galvin and um Dr. Lyons, just to think about the needs of the district. And how we can um just further um just support the work that's happening. Um so the, the Student Services Subcommittee sent out a survey to teachers and um parents, caregivers um about a month ago. And, and broke it out um to learn more information around um our student needs in terms of academic skills. Executive functioning skills and social, emotional learning um needs or skills. Um we're still uh doing, in the middle of this work, but we thought um in preparing the budget um survey that it was relevant in data that we got back. To just show that there's um some consistent trends in terms of, of priorities. Um so the, the first two slides, this slide and the next slide. Uh break out the top concerns around academic skills from teachers and parents and um. You'll see that re, reading and writing skills definitely take a lead. Um with math in there as well. And as Doug, uh Dr. Lyons had mentioned, we are in the middle of an ELA curriculum review uh right now. Uh which has been pretty comprehensive, started last spring and really thinking about our approach to um structured literacy at the elementary level. Um as well as a very specific approach to writing that the secondary group has dug into. Just trying to find a common approach to help build um our student skills in that area. Next slide. And then, um as you can see, um parent concerns matched up pretty well there. Um in terms of the science skills, that is, um Dr. Lyons had mentioned that I would talk a little, a little bit about that. We have just, while we're in the middle of our ELA review right now, we have just initiated the process for a. Uh pre-K to twelve science, cr, science, technology and engineering curriculum review. Um so we're in the process of forming a team. Of teachers across the district who will participate in that, um which will, it will last for about a month. Time and, and follow a similar curriculum review. So we're hoping for more in-depth, depth analysis and recommendations. Depth analysis and recommendations, um, probably next spring. In terms of science, technology and engineering. Next slide. And then, um, the next two slides, first is the teacher, next will be the uh parent caregiver. Um, concerns related to uh students' executive functioning skills. And these are um the tasks of organization, uh time management, um attention. You can see uh really stands out there and just getting students back um to to kind of working in a more traditional. Way within the um the school setting and making that transition from remote education. So it um student attention span definitely stands out. Next slide. And you'll see again some similarities as well. And then the next slide, next two are focused on social emotional learning. Which we talk a lot about and we are still seeing um the trends related to anxiety. And as as Dr. Lyons said perseverance in terms of, really, I think what we're hearing a lot is just engagement, motivation. Um, you know, getting students' attentions to get, you know, just excited about learning again. Um, so we're, we're just constantly um thinking about that. Next slide. You can see that there as well. So more to come, um, in terms of the work of the student services subcommittee. I'm sure you'll get updates, um. From your colleagues, but we just want, we felt like it was really good information that came out of that survey and we wanted to highlight it. Um, and just talk about the ways in which our our budget could help address some of the concerns. Next slide.
Thank you, Kara. I appreciate it. So just, just looking ahead, I talked about, you know, looking ahead to FY twenty five and twenty six, you know, it's. I think that this is the way that we need to start budgeting. It's not just. One year at a time, but one year with an, with a lookout. For two additional years. Um, and again, it's just a, it's just a perspective, right? And so. You know, at a tri board meeting, you know, I think you'll hear FinCom and and Steve Mayo with with Dan Sherman. Um, kind of looking, looking and discussing the the forecasting or the financial future of the town. And so you, you know, you may remember in in our tri- tri board meeting. You know, um, I remember it kind of very clearly that the, that the outlook, the financial outlook for the town is very positive. Right? And so new growth was positive. Support from the state, I think is, it looks like it's forecasting or trending. In a more positive direction than I think we had anticipated. But on the school side, we we control. We we like control the controllables. We can only control what happens on the school side. And so. We are thinking very clearly about looking ahead. We need to be very thoughtful about school safety. And we're doing work in that area and Christine has brought this up in a, in a prior meeting. We have kind of a a third party coming in to assess. Our schools and how safe they are and how we can improve in that area. Jeff Weiner is going to be becoming a school committee to talk a little bit about what he's doing with technology. But we're going to be doing a cyber safety audit and just thinking about, you know, how safe. Um, we are, how safe we're kind of our operations are. With kind of our technology, but also how safe students are. So that's, there's more to follow there. Um, we need to really think about. Achievement and academic achievement, right? And so we need to challenge our our kind of most. Uh, advanced learners in ways differently than we have in years past. We have kids that are are ready to jump into more advanced work. Um, and we really need to think about how we can differentiate. And how we can also think about points of acceleration. So more to follow there. Uh, you'll hear more about equity, counseling and opportunities for kids. Um, I mentioned human resources. Uh, this is the, this is the third or fourth time in this, so that's, this is a big deal for us. Right? Human resources and labor are are critical right now. And so we, you did hear Tom start kick off the meeting by thanking the community around their support. To to help us build a new high school. Which we are on our way there. And again, just to keep everybody focused. The new high school is scheduled to open in the fall of twenty six or January of twenty seven. Right? Fall of twenty six, January of twenty seven. That is not a long time from now, right? So we're. We're really um kind of moving ahead with that, so that's very positive. So that will address that bullet. Um, and and we need to increase opportunities for kids at the high school level for early college. And internships to really help our students be more competitive as they're going into college or they're going into to work. Um, and to continue to develop a plan for special education and E- English language learners. Um, again, you'll see, you'll hear from more from Kara on the the next slide about special education, the work that Rosie's doing. Um, and acceleration academies. You know, you've heard from us and you've heard from teachers about. The acceleration work that we're doing in the summer, especially with our students that are new to the Wakefield Public Schools. Um, I think we're really doing some great work in that area and helping our students come in. That are aren't, aren't yet in kindergarten, but come in early in August. To hit the ground running. And and so I feel like that's, that's been a real. Um, special build for us. And I think it's, it's not only heart filling, it, we know that it's making a difference for students and families. Next slide please.
So we just really wanna highlight what this budget includes for twenty four that it doesn't include in twenty three. So what are the two new asks? Really only two FTE additions in this budget moving from twenty three to twenty four. And it's really highlighting the two departments that Doug and Kara were just um speaking of. The first one is an an additional one point O FTE for the EL. Um, position, which would bring our our district, district wide total up from four point eight, which we have now to five point eight for twenty four. And then the other uh additional FTE is for the special education program. Which is really highlighting the program development that Rosie Galvin has been doing in the district. Which is really ultimately, I know it's an additional one point O, but it is saving the district money. With program development, which would otherwise have out of district placements. So really, um, these two um additions to the district are really um addressing needs. I know there are additional costs, but it's ultimately saving the district money. Next slide.
I can jump in here. Um, yes, we've been working closely with our um English learner teachers across the district. Um, who are spread out across our elementary, middle and high school. And we have been monitoring um the rising caseload of students throughout the district. Um, over a couple of years now. And I think what we need to think about is not only um numbers in terms of total number of English learners in the district. But also the the wide range in terms of proficiency levels, um, support services required. Um, that the students are entitled to um by law and just also that um. Idea about family and community engagement and just really trying to onboard our English learners well into the district. Depending on there, you, you know, a lot of students are coming to us with a um, a wide variety of backgrounds and experiences. And um, some of our students, as I mentioned, are coming with no English at all. Um, and we're really trying to build up those homeschool connections and trust and um community. So we're, we're finding that we need um more direct service to our students within the district. Um, and also to group and schedule them in a way that we can be as effective as possible. Um, when they're not with our English um learner teachers, uh, the students are are scheduled with into general education. Classes across the district. So it's also important for us to have our. Yes, our EL department have time to consult with teachers, to share strategies, to um support translation. And homeschool communication. So we're definitely seeing needs across the district in this area. Next slide. And then as uh Dr. Lyons and Mr. Fagin had said, I'll speak for Rosie Galvin on this slide. Uh, but she's done exceptional work in this area of of looking to align our specialized programs. Um, through the levels so that we can have guarantees for our our parents and students that. The services and supports that their students need and uh deserve or require are guaranteed level to level. Um, I think that it's incredibly anxiety producing for families if they feel that their students um. IP is being met really well at one level, and then they're unsure if that can be uh replicated at the next level. And um, as I mentioned, the the IP is a binding document, um, that really outlines what our students need. To be successful in school and and it's our obligation to provide that level to level as students need it. Um, so you've seen this visual before. It really maps out the different programs that we. Um, that we have in the district in a really nice way that. Clear, but it also shows where we have uh current gaps. You can see at the high school, um, the WMHS uh column right there, that in blue. The language based program, that is the new budget asked to have a teacher um hired to help head up that program. In line with what we have at Galvin and the elementary. So we have students who maybe refer to the language based program. As young as elementary school, um, early elementary or um. Can you, can you hear me okay? Okay, it just said my internet was unstable, so I didn't know if I froze. Um, so as early as elementary and then um head up to Galvin and then um students who still require their program. We, we do have a cohort of students um heading up to the high school. Um, so we have a student, students who will require this program next year. But also behind those students, um, there are students in a seventh grade language based program right now. Um, a sixth grade and a fifth grade. We have cohorts of students across all of the grades at the Galvin. So building this program will will serve us as a district for years to come. And then you can see in green, um, Ms. Galvin just kind of wanted to highlight um the other gaps that we have at the high school. Um, which will require additional supports as we enter into other budget cycles to help complete the build. Next slide.
So the, the budget for twenty four, the proposed budget is an increase of five point two two over twenty three. It's just over fifty million dollars. We also just wanted to highlight. That the funding source of chapter seventy, right? We get, we hear a lot of talk about, well, what's chapter seventy? Is it going to? Directly to the schools? Does it go to the town? How does that fund the schools? Chapter seventy is based on, uh, you've heard of about that complicated um statewide funding formula for education. It's based on um cities and towns in Massachusetts, their demographics, their ability to pay and um. Uh, communities ability to pay in terms of um housing prices, um, real estate. Um, and um meals tax and things of that nature. So it's, it's a complicated formula, but it makes up um. A local contribution and it makes up a chapter seventy statewide contribution. In order to both help fund cities and towns, help to fund their school budgets. So for us, from twenty three to twenty four, we're seeing an increase, almost nine percent, eight point nine two. Increase in state aid. This is fantastic. Of course, I know we'd like to see more, but this is definitely trending in the right direction. So this um coupled with the local contribution from the town helps fund the school department budget. And we just really wanted to highlight that because this is um trending in the right direction. Next slide.
So we are proposing um a five point two two percent increase over last year. Um, which is a fifty million dollar, um, I can get the exact amount, I'm just going back. So it is, is fifty million ninety thousand one hundred and ninety one dollars is is what we're. Looking for, we're, we're looking to propose to school committee this year. So happy to answer any question that anyone may have. Yeah, great Kevin. Kevin?
Oh, thank you. Um, first of all, thank you very much, you know, for the presentation and for our book here, uh, Christine and and. And Superintendent Lyons and and Kara, this is really done very, very well. And for someone who doesn't deal. With a lot of spreadsheets and figures, it's, it's really clear. And so I always really, really appreciate that. And I sent Christine a couple of questions earlier, um, which were really helpful. Um, to kind of get some answers for. So two things, um, first, one of the things that I had noticed in looking at the surveys. Um, particularly those that when you surveyed the faculty and staff. And I think you had pointed out, Dr. Lyons, that counselors, psychologists, social workers, like those are ser- uh, you know, certainly one area that was identified. Um, was there any thought to including um some additional resources for, for that sort of? Role um for next year? And if not this year, is that something you would foresee in the future? Or kind of what was some of the decision making there around whether or not some additional um human resources in that area was necessary?
Yeah, so, so we, one of the things that we changed this year is we have two counselors that are now co-leading. Um, and this is a grant funded stipend that are co-leading um counseling services for the district. We've expanded um with a, we've expanded with a mental health screener at elementary that we piloted this year. Right? And so we've also kind of done some different work in regard to counselors working together. And different work with supervision uh that we've provided. We've also brought on a new FTE for that. To support students uh that's funded through a grant and we're working on another grant right now. We're actually, we're working on two grants. So there, we're looking at additional resources through grant funding, Kevin. Um, to try to bring in additional resources in regard to personnel. Uh, but we have, you know, counseling services is an area that probably has increased by probably. In regard to personnel, probably twenty or thirty percent in the last five years. And so we feel like we're working really hard to meet the needs of our students in those spaces. Uh, but those are all of the changes that we're currently, that we currently have made and that we are working to make. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, so is it safe to say you think for now we are sufficiently staffed with maybe some additional assistance via grants or?
Well, I mean, we, we can always use additional help or an additional support. Um, I, you know, do we have enough counselors? I, I would say with the new, with the, with the addition of the new high school personnel, I do think we need help at the middle school. But I think that that may come through um one of the two grants that we're working on. Um, you know, if if we were to add additional funding to the budget. I, I just think that that's difficult right now while we're trying to negotiate a contract. Because of the, we're just trying to balance everything, right? And so, um, I, I think with what we would like to do is to try to pursue those grants. And see how that shakes out and and then report back, you know, at and at a later meeting, just in regard to what. Kind of numbers look like, what caseloads look like, what needs look like. And and maybe even give, create an opportunity to hear from the district leaders, from Andrew Sidroni. And Jennifer Hart around the work that that we're doing and the work that has been done in the district. It might give a greater perspective of the range um and and the increases that have been put in place.
Yeah, no, that's great. Thank you. Um. The other thing that the other question I kind of had was around chapter seventy, Christine. Um, so we're, we're almost realizing, or the town is almost realizing additional seven hundred thousand. So I don't know if this is an appropriate way to think about it, but I think if that's, that's kind of ours. I know it goes to the town, but if you figure that in. If we add that to last year's budget, so what we're really, new monies from, from the community that that make up that fifty million. Would, would it be appropriate to say it's only a three point seven percent increase, not the five? Yes, overall, we're requesting five point something, but if we deduct the amount that's coming in, the additional monies from chapter seventy. They drops down to three point seven. Is, is that?
Well, it's not so much a one for one, Kevin, because what, what the, the state does is they overall look at what they call it. Um, net school spending. So what Wakefield should be spending on education. So they come up with that from the formula, what that number should be. And then they do a calculation of what, what that amount should come from, the taxpayers of Wakefield. And then what should be state funded. So the two of them together kind of feed that funding source. So every year, that kind of is a gradual build. But yes, every increase does help, but the local appropriation goes up every year as well.
The local, the, the local appropriation is not going up five percent, is it?
No, it's gone up.
Three point seven.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, so I mean, I think that sounds a little better. Cause I think, I guess the case, the case I'm making is, I think this is a really responsible budget. I think it's very well done, I think to you and and to everybody on the subcommittee um that worked on this. I think this is a really good. Budget. It doesn't include tons of stuff. I think there's certainly a lot more needs that are out there. Um, which is why I was asking about the counselors and the psycholo- psychologists or some of the other kind of areas that. That we had highlighted to look for for the future, but um I think you did a great job. I think this is really reasonable. Um, and um. Yeah, I look forward to uh supporting it and hope the rest of the town does as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Much appreciated. Other questions? Mike?
Not really questions, but observations. So uh, so this is a five point two two percent increase. Yep, it's a, and you know, the, the fi- figure of five percent has been tossed around. You know, the surprise, whether it's magically if we're under five percent, it would be a great budget or kind of a thing. I don't agree with that at all in this case. Um, it's a, you know, for, as someone who does this for a living. Um, you know, this, this is a, a very basic bare bones. There's a lot of, a lot of additives, it's all fixed costs. We are actually already contractually obligated for this. And you know, obviously there's been assumption put in for purposes of budgeting for current negotiations as well. But you know, you think of it, uh, to get it down to under five percent would be a hundred. But you know, you think of it, uh, to get it down to under five percent would be a hundred thousand dollars. Okay, but you know, you could, you could say that, but it, it would be short sighted to do that. These two new positions that are in here. You have to look at them as it's an investment for a great return down the road for us. You know, we can't stop investing. You know, that's a foolish way of budgeting because eventually you have bigger problems than just your budget as well. So yeah, I, I think this is an extraordinarily um, practical um, budget. Uh, you know, and, and one of the questions I was asking is if you had more money, where would you put it? And there are, there are so many places you could put it. There's back office support that, you know, is stretched at the uh, seams. Uh, on many cases as well, uh, that you could go to as well. You know, it's always the last area you put into. But you know, this, this is an extraordinarily responsible budget from my perspective.
Thank you. Other thoughts? Amy?
Thank you. Thank, thank you for that presentation. I didn't hear transportation mentioned and I thought that was up for renewal, was it?
So great question, Amy. So we went back and we talked to N R T. So three years ago, just right after I started here in Wakefield, we went out to bid and N R T was the only bidder. And we, in our contract, asked for a year four or five. And we had that in the contract. And I reached out to Tom Mullen because they did give us prices for year four and five. So we are lucky that we did that because our increase next year for year four and five is only one point one increase over year three. And Tom Mullen agreed that as long as it was in the original bid and we agreed with the vendor, so we are locked in for two more years. So it's, I'm really excited about that.
Yeah, that's good news. Okay. And the other, um, when Doug was going through his slides, he said director of student services more than once. And he said it was going to come up again and it never came up. So I just didn't know, is that on the radar? What is a director of student services?
Yeah, and so I, I mentioned it twice. Um, I mentioned it on the first um, survey deck and on the second survey priority. And so the director of student services, you know, w- we've been talking about this for a li- a little bit of time now. And so, for example, um, if David Robinson's position at the high school, not to call him out by name, but. Um, that position, um, the director of guidance, right? And so in most um, districts our size. Um, there's not necessarily a director of guidance as much as, as there is a director of student services. That really um, can facilitate everything, not only in the high school. But also has a greater role in um, in supporting English language learners. And directing five oh fours and kind of um, really directing, you know, uh, students in, in kind of college placement. And so it's, it's just a, it's a, it's a bigger title. And, and there's kind of a, a more centralized role in coordinating all of the work. That falls under guidance, that can fall under special education, that can fall under E L, that can fall under a number of different areas. So I, I do think as we're kind of moving into a new high school, and I do think as we're moving forward. That position is going to be something that we need to really think about. Um, I, in terms of priorities for this year, um, I, I think in terms of direct service to kids. Um, that's, that's direct service to kids and um, settling the contract are really the two priorities in this budget.
Okay, thank you.
You're certainly welcome. Other questions? Mr. Fontanella?
You know, I think you made a really good point thinking about forecasting the budget out um, a couple of years. And you know, I agree with Kevin and um, what Mike said, that I think that this budget. You know, we're only adding two full-time positions, correct? Um, so you know, Mike, you used the word bare, bare bones, right? That we're pretty much level funding what we have now. And, and then those two important positions. But I think that one thing that is really helpful to think about is that by adding that special educational position at the high school, by creating that programming. I, I believe that we're also thinking about reducing costs at the same time by reducing out of district placements. Which, for those of you that aren't like in the education business, like when you look at those numbers, they're huge. Um, and so you could actually see some pretty big savings there. But, but a question I had was. Thinking, you know, with the idea that we just voted yes on the new high school, right? Um, and, and I, I'm not saying that this is one hundred percent going to happen. But if we're anticipating maybe an influx of new students, you know, coming down the pipeline. That would just make common sense to me that uh, we would be, um, if we had more students coming in. You know, more parents moving into Wakefield. Um, if, if we start growing a little bit. Um, you know, I would start to think, you know, we would have to start thinking about what positions, you know, we would, you know, we would be adding and. Um, yeah, so I was just kind of. Yeah, I think, uh, thinking about that.
So I'm, I'm sorry, I was just gonna repeat back your question to make sure I understand it, Kevin. So if your question is.
You know what, Doug? It wasn't even a question. It was just, it was actually really a comment because I don't think you can answer it. Um, but I just, it, it was just something that when you're looking at budget forecasting, you know, years out. You know, I'm just, I'm afraid because everyone gets so scared at the number, right? Five percent, year over year over year. And you know, you know, you know, that can, can scare a lot of, scare a lot of people. But I think that looking at future potential growth, um, you know, the town, that we really have to start thinking about possible. You, you know, things that would also have to be added um, in the future. So.
Right.
No, no question. Take the pressure off you, just.
No, thank you so much. I, I appreciate your comments. And I just want to, can I, I want to restate something that you brought up, Kevin. It's a reminder to me. And I don't know if we were clear in our presentation. I just want to make sure everyone can hear my words very carefully here. You know, we've said no new positions with the exception of what students are entitled to under the law, right? So for example, it, when English language learners move in, if they need more time. Um, or if we have an influx of students in those spaces, they are legally entitled to, to kind of greater supports, right? And so, so that's the one position that we are looking at in terms of an E L teacher. The second, and, and Kevin alluded to this, is that by expanding programming to the high school level. It keeps students in district. And so we're spending money, we're adding a position to save money, right? And so, so Kevin was spot on with this, but that we've said no new positions. One of the guiding kind of premises that we've worked with, with principals. Um, and with all stakeholders is we're not looking to add a number of new positions. We need to really do a great job um, to settle a contract, to get a new contract to, to best support personnel that we have. But, and really only add things that are going to help us in the long run at this point to save money. That's, that's a fundamental part of this and I just want to make sure everyone hears that. Other questions? Steven?
Uh, thanks. Um, yeah, the, like others have said, thank you for putting this together again. Um, it's, it's good to see the numbers. It's, it's sort of easy to read. Um, it's, it, it makes it so that you sort of, you can digest it um, better. And, and this um, presentation sort of went well with it. Um, so thank you for the work. Um, I was gonna say, I, real quick, I have questions about the student services survey, but is that coming through in a separate presentation from the student services group? Some of the slides that we saw today, so I don't need to ask those questions today.
So I, I think. Go ahead, Karen.
No, I was gonna defer to Amy or, or Kevin or anything. Amy, I think you, you, we did wanna um, at a later date, right? Give kind of an update. On the student services.
Yeah, but it won't be until probably an April, late April meeting, the second meeting in April. So if you have questions, we'd be happy to answer them now.
Okay, um, I'm gonna hold them, um, just because I, I don't think that they have a direct bearing to my thoughts on, on budget today. Um, but, but thank you for, it's good to sort of see the work that, that went into that. Um, maybe perhaps, anyway, um, the Munis finance system, when you talk about talking to town, is there? Um, is there a cost savings there if we end up using the same system?
Oh, we already.
Do you use the same system?
All, we already use the same system.
Okay.
So we're both, we're both using, using Munis. We're just looking to upgrade Munis.
Okay. Can we share that? Do we share that cost?
We do. Well, we'll share, yes, we will. We'll, we'll have a, a piece in there. Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Um. I saw um, sort of as you talk about, you know, forecasting what the needs are going to be. Are we thinking about the possibility to, um, like Wakefield Academy uh, cuts off at around, you know, entry into middle school now? Are we thinking of extending that? Um, you know, whether it's for, for kids that need sort of advanced support. Or to uh, students that need added learning supports um, to higher grade levels to? Is that, is that part of the conversation?
Not yet. Not, not, we, so if you're, if the question is, are we looking at expanding Wakefield Academy? To do um, different learning outside of the school day for, for high school is what, not yet.
Okay. That is the question. Okay.
And the answer would be not yet.
Okay. Um, and one last thing is, and I'll, and I'll preface this by saying, I had a wonderful um, sort of meeting with uh, Christine and with Dustin. Um, to talk about food services and some things in that area. Um, and one thing that struck me sort of in the budget, you know, in the book and then um. Was that when we talk about things that can't be forecasted in the, in the, the finances as it relates to food services. Um, the effectively, the state funding that we receive now um, doubles our food service budget effectively. Um, and it's, it's not insignificant and, and we've done some very good things with that. Um, and so I think sort of the, the, not like me to take a pessimist stance. Um, but I like to be prepared. So as we think about, I like the idea of forecasting, as we think about that. Um, I think sort of having an eye on what does that look like if we need to maintain sort of the level um, of service that Dustin's been able to provide? Um, you know, what, what does that look like? And I know even the budget book now, there's an increase in meal prices that, that no one is going to see. Because nobody pays for lunches now. Um, so aside from it being in this book, it's a twenty cent increase. Um, no one will notice it. And what I'm fearful of, and I think I, I mentioned this to Christine and Dustin, is I'm fearful that um, if the state does stop funding it. Parents are gonna see what to them seems like a, an increase of whatever it is, whenever that funding stops. Um, it's gonna look bigger than it was. It's not gonna look incremental. It's gonna look like a cliff. Um, and so I think sort of as we talk about numbers, um, I think it's important to not just discuss it in this meeting. I think we have to do a good job about sort of messaging out those hidden things that people don't necessarily see today. Um, but that will exist potentially someday.
Steven, I want to thank you for meeting with Dustin and I. And first of all, I, I think Wakefield is so lucky to have the addition of Dustin O'Brien. He, he is just um, fantastic at what he does. Um, he has such an analytical mind. And he's really, he's, he's got all these plans and scenarios about the next three years, but you're spot on. Because he is um, providing a fantastic product. But when you do that, your demand increases. And when your demand increases, staffing has to increase and supplies are increasing. And we all know, every, everyone goes to the grocery store every week. We all know the cost of the goods and services. Um, to prepare a good, healthy meal is expensive. So, so we're not gonna really know until July about what this means for next year or for the year after. But um, my plan is to have Dustin come to a school committee meeting, probably maybe in um, August. To kind of talk about what it's looking like once we know. Um, but you're right, Steven, if, even if field meals are free for twenty four. You know, it's probably not gonna be indefinite. Um, and then, you know, what that's gonna mean to going back to what that paid price is gonna make. Um, to be, because where else can you get a good, healthy meal for three dollars? I mean, you can't really find that anywhere. So it's gonna be.
Three twenty now.
Three twenty, twenty four, right?
But yes, yes.
So there's a lot to, to unpack there and um, it's gonna be um, a conversation for the next couple of years.
Yeah.
That, that was really all I had, but um, yeah, just back to the, thank you for the work and, and I haven't sent along my questions yet, Christine, but I will. Uh, maybe more focused, but thank you.
Thank you. Anyone? Other, other, anything that we haven't yet covered? All right, that's it from us, Mr. Margum.
Very good, uh, Dr. Lyons and, uh, and Ms. Befagno. Let me just join my colleagues and, and uh, thanking the administration. Um, for putting together the budget that you did in the, in the manner. And of, of course, most importantly. Uh, honestly, is, is, is the level of, of, of work and energy and thought. Um, that, that goes into this, is the budget process as Christine sort of kicks it off in the, in, in December. And informs the community and the committee about what happens, but here we are now at the, you know, middle of March. After hours and hours and hours of meetings and planning sessions with the principals and building based administrators. And um, you know, that building into, to the work that uh, you see tonight, working with uh, the school. You know, finance and facilities subcommittee and then often having our partners at the town finance committee joining us. So the, I think it's important that the community know that's a lot of work and energy has gone into uh, into what was presented uh, this evening. Certainly, it's open for a good, healthy conversation. And we want the community to engage us in that. Um, just to, to follow what, what the next couple uh, weeks will look like. Uh, the superintendent and myself and any member of the committee are, are welcome to join us on Thursday night. At the town uh, uh, finance committee for the presentation of this budget to the, the full town finance committee. It's this Thursday evening. Um, anyone that would like to join us is certainly welcome to do so. Uh, and two weeks from tonight uh, will be the public hearing. Uh, be, in which the community at large will have an opportunity to share their thoughts, ask questions of the committee, ask questions of the superintendent. And uh, and, and make a case. So uh, please want to uh, invite uh, the entire community to take, take a look at the budget. Uh, I honestly don't know if it's posted on the website yet, but if it's not, I'm sure it will be soon. Is it up there on the website?
Um, I just heard it'll be up in the morning.
Excellent. So tomorrow morning, anyone in the community that would like to uh, review the budget line by line. As the superintendent and the business manager presented it tonight, please do so. Um, and again, there'll be a couple of opportunities between now and when the, the school committee officially votes, uh, which will also be. Two weeks from tonight on uh, March twenty eighth. So we'll start the meeting with a public hearing, members hearing from members of the community, um, the opportunity for them to ask questions.
Or he's frozen.
When he comes back, we'll tell him we heard it all.
Heard everything.
Amy, do you wanna, or Doug, do you wanna move forward?
Yeah, wanna pick up where we are?
Do, do we have a technology presentation tonight? It's on the agenda.
It, it is, Amy. We're gonna, we're gonna move that to another meeting.
Okay.
So we do not.
Okay.
So Doug, one question. I know we have the finance committee presentation on Thursday. Um, is there a, is there a link that uh, obviously I unfortunately won't be able to be there in person, but more for anybody else if they wanted to participate? Is there a link available you could send? I'll, I'll send it to the committee. Great, thank you.
Sorry about that. I get lost in Zoom land and you, you, you're helpless, right? You, you, I don't know what to do. You know, you're, you're gonna wait till you come back on. So sorry about that all. Anyways. I, I think, I think I, I think I just wrapped up the last couple, the next couple of weeks in, in, in good form. So why don't we move on to uh, I don't know, pretend subcommittee reports, uh, finance and facilities. Mike?
Sure. So uh, we, uh, we're meeting this Thursday. We met almost two weeks ago. And no surprise, we were talking about the budget, as was stated plenty of times tonight. Uh, we had the finance committee members there, Rosie was there, you know, addressed. I think we were addressed every question we possibly could from the finance committee, so they're aware of the justification for the budget that everybody just heard tonight. Um, and um, you know, we talked about some maintenance and capital improvement stuff. You know, Tim continues to do an amazing job on that front, so we're very fortunate to have him as well. Uh, and you know, explained the opera fund situation a little bit. So uh, the, we also, um, while I have the, the microphone, we have our first P B C meeting post positive vote. On, is it tomorrow night? I think it's tomorrow night. I'm not sure. Um, so that'll, now the fun stuff starts. Is it tomorrow night? I think it's tomorrow night. I'm not sure. Um, so that'll, now the fun stuff starts. Now it's a vote. Now it's been approved. Now we actually have to build the school, so that'll be a very exciting start. So looking forward to that. Thanks, Tom.
Great. Thank you, Mike. Uh, labor, labor and personnel negotiations with Unit A continues. Um, we have this week is some strategy sessions and we'll be uh back with uh unit, Unit A next week. Um, things uh things are progressing. Uh, student services, Amy.
Hi, we met on Monday, March sixth. We talked about the survey some more, just dug into the comments in more detail and what what we were gonna do with the comments. We talked about how we were gonna present this information to the community. Um, first, we're gonna present it to the building principals and then to the community. And then at the end of our meeting, we just talked about math, my favorite subject. Um, and just asked for more than one check in then June, so. And our next meeting's Monday, March twentieth. March is flying by. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, policy and communications, Mr. Ingles.
We we met, um, we met last Tuesday. Um, we had a a quick meeting because we had some labor things uh after that, but we basically um talked about, again, reviewing policy books from um. M S B A, no, wrong acronym. Um. M A S C. Um, and uh so we're we're taking a look at those uh in preparation of putting some policies on the table. Um, just updated um to sort of keep them current. Um, so we did those. We talked a little bit about um what we discussed with the greater committee about coming up with groups to start talking a little bit about um school start times and what that would look like. Um, and then we sort of ended up talking a little bit about uh the idea of that student liaison position. And while that discussion is ongoing. Um, you know, having a member of the student advisory um council perhaps um sit with us at a meeting, maybe extend an invite um to see if they would like to sort of sit at the table and and take part in the the discourse. Um, but that was something that we had talked about as a subcommittee and wanted to present it sort of to the larger committee um and see it how folks felt about that if we had an an extra chair at the table that we might extend to to some of those students uh too specifically. Um, and see if they wanted to join us to to have part in the discussion. Again, while um the larger discussion that had been brought to us by OMID um was going on with, you know, maybe adjusting our policy, um reflecting what that actually looks like.
Great. Thank you. See, uh, when is the next uh policy subcommittee, Stephen?
Tuesday next week.
Next Tuesday?
Yep.
Okay, um, any um, any liaison reports, any committee member have anything to share about their liaison groups? Or the groups they liaison to, excuse me. Okay, uh, seeing none, we will move on to item number eleven, which is uh future, future meeting dates. Um, on the on the agenda that's published is our next meeting. We're two weeks from tonight, March uh twenty eight, uh which, as I mentioned earlier, will also include the public hearing. Uh, one thing that I wanted to note as a change, which will officially come out in the the publication, but uh we'll start that meeting at seven P M. Uh, we to uh the the night of the public hearing, those uh uh have been in the with us in the the past may recall, because the public hearing often extends the evening, we try to start, you know, half hour early. So the meeting itself will begin at seven P M, the public hearing, which needs to be published in the newspaper. Um, with a designated and official start time will be seven fifteen. So just to have all make make note of the next meeting begin at seven fifteen. Public hearing, excuse me, meeting begin at seven, public hearing at seven fifteen. And then also, while we're talking about the future, you know, April looks a little different. The calendar that we approved last summer because of the town election and April um. Uh, school vacation week, we have two meetings.
Oops, we're losing Tom again.
Yeah.
I think he was just gonna explain that the April vacation meetings, they're not gonna be the second and the fourth Tuesday, which is what they typically are.
Things in a row, April four and April eleven, not the same schedule.
Yeah, Tom, you uh, we couldn't hear you for about twenty five seconds, Tom.
Oh, I'm sorry. I I was just going over the the April schedule, April four, four and April eleven. I I apologize for the, I, you know, I don't know how to control my internet being unstable tonight, I guess. So sorry about that.
No worries.
Um, any uh school committee comments going around the room? Yes, Ms. Dr. Peskaidlo.
Well, I actually have a a few things here. Uh, the first, I just wanna, you know, Ms. Chairman, you you made some great words and some comments about our appreciation to the town. And it was a really wonderful uh election on Saturday, but um I really want to take a moment to kind of thank all those that really took leadership. Uh, particularly with the yes for W M H S, you know, months ago. Um, I think it was back with Shane was asking uh Doug and I after one of the school building committee meetings. Like, is there any, you know, what's going on with like town support and, you know, who was involved or who wasn't that involved with the Galvin? I said, well, you know, Andy Bray and Mike Scolo were some of, you know, two of the people who 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 kind of led that effort. Um, and they, along with uh our former chair, uh Susie Vayer and Ken Duvall and probably others that I'm missing out have really, really did an amazing job. And I think we owe a huge debt of gratitude uh to their efforts. Because if I'm right, I think many of them aren't gonna necessarily personally benefit, other than the way that we all do uh as a community in terms of their own children or students that may be in the system. I mean, in the hours, the time um that they've now dedicated to two projects. Um, just can't, they really left their mark. And so I don't know what we can do in terms of recognizing this, but maybe we can brainstorm. I thought maybe it'd be appropriate to express some gratitude uh for them and and inevitably the people I forgot to. But um, you know, I I held some signs and did some other things, but they were meeting for weeks on end. Um, and really just led a masterful campaign that's gonna impact our community for generations. So I'm forever grateful to uh to all of them and and I and I think many of us uh are. Um, number two, I want to thank um Mr. Ingles um and uh his wife there who organized a great reading um over at Woodville. I had I'd mentioned, I think, before, it's probably one of the things that I've enjoyed the most being on school committee and haven't been able to do it um yet, uh while uh, you know, having since returned. And it was just wonderful uh to have so many people there. Got to read to a first grade class, um, a great book and just had some really great conversations. And then went around with uh Ms. Lehman and we judged doors and it's just the energy there was just really amazing. So to get in the schools, we always talk about that as really nice and to actually get in front of students, particularly um the little students like we did was was the highlight of my week. So thank you to all of you that that coordinated that. It was as Stephen would say, it was awesome. So it was definitely awesome. Uh, number three, you know, we heard about the athlete. I mean, this has just been embarrassment of riches, I think, for our community in terms of the success. Um, back in nineteen ninety-three, we were not very successful in very much of anything. Um, and now, you know, theater, football, basketball, track. I mean, it's just incredible. Winter percussion, just the amount of school spirit is is really crazy. And so I'm just so thankful and want to recognize our athletes, the coaches, the teachers, um, and Brendan as well. Uh, for Melrose guy, he literally has become a warrior and um his his updates to the community, I feel like I'm at the game. You know, if you're online at all, you're following along, he's updating you as you go. It's second quarter, it's, you know, third quarter, here's the score. You know, women scored, a girl scored, and he does a great job. So congratulations to everyone there. It it does really make you proud. And then last but not least, um, I would go to the budget meeting, but I did want to go see Lost Girl. And so uh they had mentioned, uh, Lost Girl on Thursday is gonna be presented at seven P M in North Reading. And you could also, I think, see their entrance um into it. So if anyone's going, um, I might uh seek you out in the crowd uh to sit next to you. But so Lost Girl, seven P M, North Reading High School, I'm looking forward uh to that as well. So, yeah. Great, great, great couple of weeks here. Um, and and a great meeting, looking forward to uh things coming up, but congrats to everyone in all these initiatives.
Thanks, Kevin. I think you covered everything for everybody, so you you saved us all from talking.
There you go. Well done. Thanks, Kevin. Yeah, certainly couldn't couldn't agree more. Anyone else have any uh thoughts to share tonight? Okay, without any further.
Uh, Tom, Stephen, Stephen has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, of course. Um, I just, um, you know, I, while, so I'm I'm really excited the high school passed. Um, you know, I feel uh I was elated, but I also saw the numbers of the vote um and realized that while thirty four hundred of our um sort of fellow citizens um wanted it, there was fourteen hundred that were a little hesitant. And I know it it came with the dollar amount, and there were some people in our community that exist within a fixed um income budget, and they're nervous about this number. Um, and what I sort of became more aware of in our town is how much our um our assessors office, our senior um departments and our veterans affairs work so hard to sort of help those in our community that are on those fixed incomes. Um, and so whether it's sort of Dan Benjamin with veterans or if it's uh Victor Santiago, um, you know, with the assessors or David Ladon. Everyone, um, other parts of our town are working with folks um that are are less eager um sort of for this project. Um, and so I just wanted to say that sort of in our celebration um not kind of lose focus on there are others in our community that this is gonna be a little hard on. Um, and so I just sort of tip my hat to those in our our community. It makes it a little bit easier on them, hopefully. Um, so I just kind of wanted to say that part. Everything that Kevin said about the Readathon, reading, yep, awesome. You should have seen those doors. Um, and then uh Parent University, Kara Team CPAC, thank you for Sarah Ward. She was awesome. Took away some great um things on executive function. Tried them out immediately and failed. Definitely I have to practice. Um, and looking forward to the workshops coming up on the Saturday. So thank you for all the hard work that goes into that as well.
Great. No, no, thank you. Thank you, Stephen. And and you know, you your words are are so, 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 so very true. And thank you for sharing that. Uh, and I'm sure that's a a thought that we all that we all must very much should keep in mind. Thank you for staying. Uh, Dr. Lyons.
So just before we close on the high school, just one more comment and and we'll leave it. But, you know, one of the groups that often gets overlooked is the P B C. Joe Bertrand and Chip Tarbell are really an amazing duo. Um, they're no nonsense. They get right to the heart of the matter. And and they've they've been kind of quarterbacking and organizing groups. Um, they've been kind of really leading our architectural group and our project management group. And so so they've been really kind of amazing liaisons for us. So I feel like I we would be remiss if we we didn't take the opportunity to also recognize them because they're they're a large part of the reason that the vote passed as well. So that's it for me. Um, thank you.
Very true as well. Uh, very, very, very much. So our partners in 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 town government can't be, can't be, uh, you know, too, can't be underappreciated. Uh, the work that they do and the partnership that they hold and and the passion that they share for the schools. We are not a community, uh, we are not a school district that does not have incredibly supportive a town administration and and community of voters and and taxpayers. So we are very, very fortunate here in Wakefield. Yeah, very true all around. Thank you. Okay, without any further comments, uh, Ms. Lehman, we have a motion.
I might read this really slow because I have ten more minutes.
Oh, are you trying to bag the over under? Oh, I can't believe you would do that.
All right, moved at the school committee adjournments meeting of Tuesday, March fourteen, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? We we can have the discussion. We can vote this down if you want, Amy to.
We we can talk about anything for ten minutes.
I'm kidding.
Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? Uh, passes unanimously. Good, good night, everyone, and thank you.
Have a great evening, everybody.
Stay safe in the snowstorm. Peace out.
Bye, everybody.